I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a special business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM. The community can attend council meetings in person, view meetings on Facebook Live, YouTube, RCTV, Comcast Channel 21 or 321, Zippily Channel 34, or listen live by calling 510-335-7371. I will call, roll, starting with Council President Forsyth.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Carson.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Khan.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Critzer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is items from the audience. Speakers have four minutes to — whoops, sorry. Back it up. We have a special — we do have a special order of the day. I am so sorry, Ms. Dr. Morrison. Tonight, we have a special presentation from Special Orders of the Day from Dr. Amy Morrison, from Lake Washington Institute of Technology, and she's here to give us — we try to do an annual update about the school, and take it away, Dr. Morrison.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor Bernie, members of the council. I'm so pleased to be here with you this evening. I'm Amy Morrison. I'm the president of Lake Washington Institute of Technology, and I'm so pleased to provide you with a very brief update on what we've been up to these past few years during the pandemic, where we are today, and where we are going. First, I just want to say a special thank you to our mayor for always taking my calls and your advocacy of the college, and thank you to the council for our longstanding partnership, your community center, our Marymore campus, which has been a longstanding, very successful partnership. So, thank you. Certainly, I don't need to remind all of you, our community was first hit by the U.S. COVID-19 pandemic, and our college was the first in the country also impacted. The Chronicle of Higher Education dubbed us Campus Zero, as 18 of our first-quarter nursing students were impacted during clinical education at Life Care Center of Kirkland. Certainly, we've come a long way during that time, when the community and the college jumped into action to support our students. The college pivoted within one week, going online, which is no small feat for a technical college, and then we were back partially in-person June of 2020, and we've been fully reopened since June of — since fall of 2022. Just for transparency's sake, I wanted to share with you, we received a tremendous amount of federal support to support students, and you know, in higher education, we love our special terms. Hi-Flex is abbreviated for Hybrid Flexible Learning. Certainly, we had the opportunity to invest in IT, prioritize campus safety and health, and of course, invest in childcare. I just want to say a public thank you to all of you and to our shared community, that we would not be where we are today without our community. Our foundation stepped up with community support to raise over 1.7 million to support students through scholarships, childcare grants, emergency grants, and we're very proud to say, in partnership, we helped prepare over 2,000 essential graduates who went into essential employment in areas such as healthcare, public health, IT, and business alone. And I also wanted to note, those 18 nursing students all graduated on time, and I think they're among the best-prepared nurses we have in our community. We are certainly stronger than we were prior to the pandemic, and we are ready for what is next. So, we continue to lead the state's community and technical college system in the development of applied bachelor's degrees listed here, and we continue to grow new programs to meet the needs of our community, particularly paraeducator, and our newest Applied Bachelor's Degree in Art Illustration, and then future programs, including a Bachelor's of Science in Computer Science, thanks to legislative approval. Our college has a longstanding commitment to DEI work, and you can see just a snapshot of the many accomplishments by my colleagues at the community, at the college. I'm most proud of the fact that all of our two-year and four-year degree programs have at least one diversity and social justice course requirement that is contextualized to their chosen career path, and will help all of our students be prepared to work in a multicultural and global environment. So, let me just wrap up, and I'd be happy to take questions, with sharing a little bit about where we're going from here. For those of you who have been at the college — I'm sorry, I'm going to compete with the concert now. Let me lean in here. For those of you who have been at the college recently, while we're technically in the city of Kirkland, we're literally across the street from the city of Redmond, and as you come into the campus, you might see some well-loved yellow portables. Those portables we purchased used over 25 years ago and comprise our early learning center. Thanks to support from Congresswoman Del Bene, the State Department of Commerce, our college foundation, and we're hopeful from some additional county support, thanks to Councilmember Balducci, we will be able to build a new early learning center, with expanded capacity for the children of our students, the children of our employees, and the children in our community as well. We're very excited about that, and certainly, one of the many lessons of the pandemic that we all learned is how essential childcare is to our community. In addition, thanks to Senator Murray, we were able to secure over $1 million to make our campus more energy-efficient by establishing solar panels on all of our rooftops. If you've been to our campus, we have a lot of rooftop to make much more sustainable for our community and to be able to reinvest those energy savings back into our instructional programs. And finally, we are super excited that the landscape of our campus is going to change very dramatically. As you visit our campus on 132nd, as you come into the main entrance, there's kind of a grassy area. That will be the home of our next instructional building, our Center for Design. We will be breaking ground by the end of this year. This is a two-story, 50,000-square-foot instructional facility that will house our high-demand programs from gaming, art illustration, applied design, architecture, the two-year and the four-year level. You can see there's kind of in this rendering, there are some glass panels. That will be a 500-seat multipurpose space that we hope will be a new hub in our community. This is another rendering of the facility, and some internal renderings as well. This is really intended — the whole entire facility is really intended to be a canvas to showcase our students' work and creativity. Altogether, these three projects will total over $45 million in capital investments in our campus and then within the next couple of years. So, I'll certainly keep you posted, and you'll get an invitation to our groundbreaking for our Center for Design before the end of the calendar year, and then sometime next year, we'll cut that ribbon on our new early learning center. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to give you a brief update on what this college — a hard-working college that is so proud to serve our diligent and hard-working students has been up to in the past couple of years. Happy to answer any questions, whatever I could do to be helpful.
Well, thank you so much. This is very exciting, all the exciting new buildings coming online and the new program. So, appreciate you sharing that with us. Are there any questions for Dr. Morrison? I don't see any tonight. Well, thank you again very much. We appreciate your time and look forward to getting invitations to the groundbreaking. Very exciting.
All right. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda, or the second now, is items from the audience. Speakers have four minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have four minutes to address the council. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond, and as a reminder, RCW 42.17A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot measures or candidates. And I — we have four people signed up in the audience tonight. We will start with Mary Ellis, then Alex Zimmerman, then Matt Gleason, then David Morton.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ellis. I'm — my husband and I are seniors, and we live in downtown Redmond, and we've been there for four years in the same apartment. Six months before our lease came due, we were notified by the management company that our rent was going to be increased by 11.8%. We're on a fixed budget, so on a, you know, fixed income, so it was a lot. So, two months later, that was December, so February, we started looking for a new apartment, and we found one. We found a few, actually, that were at the same rate as we are currently paying, but unfortunately, they wanted us to move in within 30 days of seeing the apartment. They didn't want to hold it for us, so we couldn't do that because we still had six months or four more months before our lease ended. So, we contacted the management company, asked them if they could do anything for us. They said, no. It couldn't be. We'd have to pay the remainder of the lease and plus, you know, and then any move-out expenses too, but that was fine. We knew that. So then, after that happened, we then learned that an identical apartment right below our apartment, the floor beneath us, was renting for more than 10% less than we were currently paying without the increase. So, we asked, could we move there? They wouldn't let us, and so they said, no, you still have to pay both. You could, but you still have to pay your own rent in the other apartment. So, it's really prohibitive. And so, what I'm trying to say, after a lot of haggling, back and forth, we were able to settle, but this six-month rule is just crazy, because once you find — once you hear about it, and then you can actually look for a place, you can't move in because they — you still have to pay too much rent, and it's a lot of money. So, it's a problem for us, and I think it might be a problem for other people too, and we were able to work it out, but you know, with this smaller increase, but we just — I felt that you should know that this is a problem. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Next is Alex Zimmerman, then Matt Gleason, then David Morton.
Dem Nazi Gestapo fascist, a mafioso who support Iranian Muslim. We have war — my name is Alex Zimmerman, and I live in Bellevue, Fort Worth, I first. Thank you. Give me a chance to speak. Why? Because Bellevue Council don't give me a chance to speak for the last few months, totally. We have war right now with Iranian Islamic Republic. It's a serious war. American dying right now, American citizens dying, and democratic mafia in King County support Iranian Muslim. It's absurd by definition, and this is a pure crime, because all countries in this planet, you know what it means? When you support your enemy, you go in jail or execute. But democratic mafia, what is controlling everything, is a pure fascism. For this, I told you for the last, I don't know, couple dozen years, yep. They doing this, and they don't care about this. It's so interesting. Two half-million people living in King County, you know what it means? Bellevue, 150,000 people, nobody care about this. Situation so idiotic, you know what it means? So, people not react. When you ask Bellevue Council, who right now don't give me a chance to speak for a few months, totally, you know what it means? Are you support Iranian war? And nobody gives them question to them. Oh, Alex Zimmerman, so they cut me. Yeah. So, what is this? It's exactly what I told you. It's Nazi Gestapo principle. But situation so dangerous, because Iran right now, with Russian support, will build atomic bomb probably this year or next year. Either we'll destroy Israel, or 8 million people will be go in garbage. You understand? And next is will be New York, and I try talking about this, and nobody support me. Nobody reaction. So, you're thinking, guy, who are you? A zombie? An idiot? Or happy cow? You know what it means? What is — have a pleasure, you know what it means? Give milk to mafia or to fascism, what has happened right now. Guys, I ask everybody who listen to me, stand up. It's America. We cannot support in democratic mafia, cannot support war with Iran. It's by definition absurd. And so, interesting, I never hear like this before in this planet, because many countries don't like Iranian Muslim. You understand what I talk? They don't like Russian too, for example. This is exactly what has happened right now. We need doing about this something. We cannot be quiet. No one civilize. American, you know what it means? Don't post to be quiet. When you quiet, you mean you support this fascism who support Iranian Muslim in war with Iranian Republic. This by definition absurd. Sorry, I am a Jew, you know what it means? I'm more maybe interesting, they are other people, but how is this possible? Because Iranian inside kill everybody, Jew, Christian, people who have different opinions, they are pure terrorist government. So, why people so quiet, huh? I speak everywhere, I call everywhere, you know what it means? Newspaper, everything, everybody quiet. Everybody scared. It's only approved. So, we have a government, local government, who absolutely identical the Nazi Gestapo principle. They more dangerous than Nazi, because Hitler by definition not idiot, they are pure, pure idiota, a psychopath. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Matt Gleason and David Morton.
Hello. My name is Matt Gleason. I'm a renter. I currently live just across Bellred in Bellevue, but I was formerly a renter in the city of Redmond, and I work in Redmond as well. You may recognize me from last summer. I was part of the group that helped pass the tenant protections, along with you all, of course, and I've been doing follow-up work to talk to renters since then. So, in the immediate aftermath, I went back to some of those buildings that we had talked to renters at to pass it immediately, and found that landlords were already slow to implement the rules. Due to the private right of action, we were never able to successfully make any progress on that. Landlords basically told people to sue them, and people's lawyers told them that it wasn't worth it. And from the conversations that I had, approximately, you know, 100 to 200 over derby days, that, you know, that continues to this day, that sort of precedent. So, most renters are not aware of the tenant protections that were passed last summer, and of those who are aware, I talked to one person who was able to use them, but that is out of literally hundreds. So, we're here today, I think you may have heard Craig talk the other week as well. We want to — we want council to honor your all's intent of the original work, which was to give renters stability and predictability, and allow them to, you know, see upcoming rent increases and react to them, so that, you know, they can have the same kind of stable homes that property owners enjoy. So, to that end, we're recommending a few modifications. One of them speaks directly to Mary Ellis's comments, which is to allow people to terminate their lease with no penalty early after receiving notice. This would allow the six-month lease notice period to be truly useful in a way that it isn't right now. I heard from Mary Ellis and others that currently, it can be sort of a source of stress, and I understand that, you know, clearly, the intent from council was to give people an ability to react and plan to these kinds of things. So, we would encourage you to take that step, which we'll be proposing specific language soon. Also, we saw landlords demanding that people respond and decide whether they're going to re-sign the lease at the same time that they receive their notice, in this case, six months in advance. As Mary Ellis's testimony made clear, in case you haven't tried to rent recently, it's not possible to look for a unit six months in advance. It's completely impossible. So, when a landlord demands you to decide if you will re-sign your lease six months in advance, that's a really bad situation to be in. So, we'll also be proposing that Redmond do something similar to Seattle, which is set a timeframe at which landlords can offer and require resigning, so that everyone has a reasonable timeframe where resigning happens. And then, in addition, to fix the education piece, I think that for landlords who are acting in good faith, it should be the least they can do to take some documentation provided by the city and include it with their leases, just so that everyone understands. You know, if the landlords are trying to engage in good faith in this process, then I think that's extremely, you know, unobjectionable and an easy thing to achieve, to draft a document that provides renters an explanation of their rights and ask that to be provided. And yeah, I understand there's a report coming up later today about the impact of these tenant protections, and I expect that you'll probably hear similarly, that, you know, the utility has been somewhat muted by some unexpected behaviors from landlords. But I do think we're close, and I would highly encourage council to honor their great original intent. I understand you all are rightly proud of the work that you did there, and so I think with a few more modifications, we can take that six-month notice and other provisions and really realize the gains that we intended last year. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next is David Morton.
Good evening. I'm David Morton. Welcome to the era of global boiling. Thankfully, Redmond is about ready to include a climate change and resiliency element in their current comp plan update. The Redmond 2050 Technical Advisory Committee, of which I am a member, was recently asked what we'd like to see addressed in the housing element before the Planning Commission recommends its approval to the council. Drawing from the early version of the Department of Commerce's Climate Element Planning Guidance, the following list is composed of measures, policies, and actions that could be addressed in the housing element. First, maximize solar access of site designs for new residential buildings. Solar access is the ability of one property to receive sunlight across property lines without obstruction from another property. Second, develop or modify design standards to integrate exterior building features that reduce the impacts of climate change and increase resilience. Examples are awnings that provide shade and shelter from storms and other severe weather. Cool and green roofs insulate buildings from solar heat and reduce building cooling costs. Third, require new subdivisions to bury electricity transmission lines and associated infrastructure to reduce damage from storms and wildfire ignition risks. Fourth, ensure that buildings are designed and built sustainably to reduce environmental impacts and remain resilient to extreme weather and other hazards worsened by climate change. Fifth, require the design and construction of residential buildings and their surrounding sites to reduce and treat stormwater runoff and pollution. Sixth, prioritize the use of lower-carbon building materials in new construction and building retrofits to reduce embodied carbon emissions. Seventh, adopt fire resilience standards for new and redeveloped sites in high-risk wildfire areas. Eighth, require electric heat pumps and restrict natural gas in new residential construction. Update building codes to be consistent with state building and energy codes. Ninth, design buildings for passive survivability to ensure that the building will stay at a safe temperature if the power goes out. Tenth, encourage the use of modular buildings that can be moved, renovated, and deconstructed as needs and climate impacts change. Eleventh, expand electric vehicle infrastructure, including the comprehensive location of charging stations. Twelfth, require additional net-zero greenhouse gas emission features of all new residential structures. Thirteenth, maximize renewable energy sources for electricity and heat to new and existing residential buildings. Fourteenth, develop low-energy use requirements and building code compliance for residential buildings. Buildings could be required to receive a Living Building Energy Star or LEED certification. Fifteenth, provide incentives to improve energy efficiency in existing residential buildings. Sixteenth, prioritize the adaptive reuse of buildings, recognizing the emission reduction benefits of retaining existing buildings. This avoids carbon emissions from building demolition, new building materials, transportation of materials, and construction of a new building. Finally, prioritize the preservation and weatherization of housing in overburdened communities to reduce emissions and increase resilience. Consideration should be given to tenants at risk of displacement from green gentrification. Thank you.
Thank you. We did have one request to speak remotely.
Hello, this is Gita.
Hello, this is Mayor Bernie. You have four minutes to address the council.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So, I'm a renter in the Redmond area, and there's a couple different points that I'd like to make today. One, our rent keeps growing up without many improvements to the facility. Within the past two years since we moved here, we moved here exactly two years ago, rent has gone up 10% each time, and both times, very little has changed. And this year, we actually ended up finding a new place that does fit our budget, where I was actually looking for a three-bedroom, and we found something for less expensive than where we're currently at, and it's on the other side of Redmond. So, it's a little bit further away from downtown, but it's still okay where we want to be. And we could not lock it down in June because our lease expired in September, and so we lost the apartment. And now, I'm stuck yet again another year in a smaller two-bedroom because we weren't able to break our lease. So, that's about —
Are you still there?
Yes. So, that's about kind of the both, both points that I wanted to make is like, one, rent keeps going up exorbitant amount, 10%, which is more than other places we've seen around here, and we live in the Allee Apartments right across from City Hall. And second is, when we did find a place, that the Spectra Apartments, which are amazing, we couldn't move because we couldn't actually like break our lease and afford it. And in this area, we want to stay here, but it's starting to become unaffordable and not very family-friendly, based on the rent prices and the size of the units and all of that. And so, it's very difficult when you do find a place to actually try to move. Awesome. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Our items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled? Seeing none, I will read the ordinance into the record. Ordinance number 3128, an ordinance of the city of Redmond, Washington, annexing a 2.24-acre parcel in unincorporated King County pursuant to RCW 35A 14300. Annexation for municipal purposes, applying zoning, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date. This is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Forsyth.
Aye.
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 And that passes six to zero, and with the passage of the consent agenda, we have a new Finance Director, Kelly Cochran, who will be sworn in at this time. Come on up, Ms. Cochran. Yeah, please take pictures. Her parent, her family, so too. And we'd love to have her family come up as well, and we can — they can come up and take pictures, and then we can get a picture of all of them. Come on up. I see you. I've already seen you. Come on up. Oh, yeah. Let's go down there. We can shake her hand. Up. We're going to shake her hand. I'm swearing in the whole group?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. There's your right hand. Do you, Kelly Cochran, having been duly appointed as the Finance Director of the City of Redmond, Washington, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as prescribed by law and to the best of your ability, and you will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Redmond, the laws and the Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America? Congratulations. Do you want to sign this one? Just remain right there, and I'll do the rest. Sign slower. Our next item of business is a staff report on the Tenant Protection Ordinance number 3091, Feedback Summary. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item. Will you use the podium? Yeah, we switched to using the podiums during staff reports during business meetings. I think you might have been on vacation while we talked.
All right. Thank you for the heads up. All right. Good evening, council. Carol Helen, Planning and Community Development Director. And tonight, we're going to introduce the staff report to update council on outcomes of the tenant regulations that were adopted last year. On July 19, 2022, council adopted and passed Ordinance number 3091, establishing a series of regulations governing the relationship between tenants and landlords, which went into effect on July 30, 2022. At passage, council requested that we report out on the effects of the regulations after they had been in place for a period of one year, and last a couple of days ago marked that one-year mark. And Sarah Fies, Ellen is here joining us tonight to summarize the changes that were made, just very briefly as a reminder, and then to provide some feedback that we've received. And tonight is only a staff report, and if there are questions that emerge as a result of our report, we're happy to take those and respond to council at a future time.
Thank you, Carol. Good evening, mayor and council members. This is a little awkward standing for the first time. So as Carol mentioned, this is a staff report to provide information requested by city council one year ago. City council passed Ordinance 3091, establishing a series of tenant and landlord requirements. These included, one, landlords are required, in most cases, to provide a minimum of 120 days written notice of rent increases greater than 3% and 180 days for increases over 10%. It also established a cap on late fees for late rental payments of 1.5% of a tenant's monthly rent. We also established a cap, in most cases, on move-in fees and social security deposits of no more than one month's rent and allows a tenant to pay in installments. Finally, we also passed that landlords may ask an applicant for the social security number, but if it is not provided, a landlord cannot use it as cause for declining the tenant. Due to the limited ability for stakeholder outreach and the speed at which the ordinance was adopted, council had requested that staff basically follow up on some of the concerns that were raised and then report back, which is today. So outreach that was conducted after the city council passed the ordinance, city staff received numerous inquiries from property managers, tenants, and interested parties. So we created a Frequently Asked Questions landing page on the website, utilized the city's e-newsletter and social media channels, and then co-promoted Eastside Legal Assistance Program's tenant workshops at the Redmond Library. About six months after the ordinance had gone into effect, Redmond staff proactively started to engage relevant stakeholders to solicit feedback regarding the effects of the ordinance. I met with over 10-plus impacted tenants and tenant assistance organizations, including Eastside Legal Assistance Program, Transit, Writers Union, and others, and then also met with over 10 meetings with landlords, property management organizations, and other stakeholders, including One Redmond Government Affairs Committee and the Washington Multifamily Housing Association. In addition, over the last year, I've asked staff to share documentation of resident inquiries that have come in to also document that as well. So in summary, most feedback from stakeholders centered on the increased timeline requirements, and some felt it was too early to tell what kind of impact the ordinance still has had, given that it's been one year, but still only one year. And while most tenants appreciated the changes and reported landlord compliance after notification of the rules, some lacked, some said, some reported a lack of compliance and difficulty with pursuing a private right of action, as you heard earlier. A couple tenants also reported their landlords requiring a response, acceptance or non-acceptance, to the rent increase before the 120- and 180-day period, thus defeating the purpose of the opportunity for the tenant to use the notice to decide. That was also mentioned earlier. For example, you could be given notice, but then within 30 days, you need to respond, and so that gets to that time period. I heard that from a couple different tenants. One property management company reported concerns about an increase in late payments since the ordinance has gone into effect, and another expressed concern about background checks without being able to use social security numbers. One landlord reported that security deposit limitations is causing them to be more rigid in qualifying new tenants and rejecting potential tenants that previously might have been accepted. For example, a landlord might have taken a riskier tenant with the assurance that they could recruit a higher deposit if the tenant defaults, but they can't do that now. They recommended a program that the City of Oakland adopted that's in the pilot phase right now called the Rental Risk Assistance Fund Program, which works with landlords to provide grants to landlords with eligible tenants that the city provides in order to try and find a middle ground. One landlord cited concerns about the tenant's ability to pursue legal action after the tenants had vacated the unit as a way to avoid paying damage costs to the unit and suggested a cure from legal action for the landlord once a tenant had moved out. This gentleman actually came to council, I think, about six months ago, you may recall. While I do not have any concrete data regarding this concern, I have heard from both landlords and tenants that landlords were notifying tenants of rental increases in excess of 10% because of the murkiness of forecasting 120 to 180 days in advance. So, for example, right, doing the maximum amount that they could or that they might think because they weren't sure what it would be. I'd just point out that if the market was the opposite way, that we had a flood of supply, then it would do the opposite thing, where they would likely do the lowest. Unfortunately, we are not in that dynamic. Additionally, some property management companies cited an increase in administrative costs due to the rules and staffing, and those costs were passed on to tenants. In the past two weeks, mayor and city council have received about 50-plus emails from constituents requesting adoption of new regulations. You heard some of them tonight, but those included allowing tenants to break lease agreements early if there was a notice of substantial rent increase, adding a just cause that goes beyond the statewide requirements, creating guidelines for when a landlord can request a tenant to re-sign a lease after providing rental notice, that was something that was brought up earlier, adopting a rental property registration program, creating a housing ombudsman position, and increasing staff support and legal assistance for tenants. Finally, one item that all landlords and tenants that I spoke with agreed upon was the need for greater information and dispute resolution resources. So overall impact, I went through and re-watched from council the items that had been raised last time, so there was kind of some top issues. Overall, there, we have seen that rates from, rates of landlord compliance with ordinance requirements has been high. We've also still heard from tenants that the concern for pace and magnitude of rent increases has still been really difficult. Oh, there we go. And that there's additional requests for increased flexibility and stability on the tenant side. Impact to new development, which was a really big concern from last time. Since July of 2022, staff have not been made aware of any development application that was withdrawn or not submitted because of the ordinance requirements. I will say, like many other cities, staff are reporting a slowdown in pre-applications for development. This is more likely an indication of the changing economic environment and cost of materials than related to this ordinance, and we also didn't hear that from developers going forward as much. Private right of action, we have not been aware of any cases that have come forward. We've heard from renters about the difficulty of finding an attorney that is willing to pursue that kind of a case. Eastside Legal Assistance Program reported high compliance of last landlords after sending an initial letter on behalf of the tenants, so they didn't see a need to try and pursue the private right of action because most landlords comply just after please comply letter. ELEP did receive multiple requests, about 10 in the past year, from people for assistance that did not meet their low-income requirement, so they could not be provided assistance from ELEP. Finally, a lack of consistency in information between jurisdictions. Attached in your packet is a matrix that shows just the east side. There's also north and south King Counties that have different rules and regulations. And so a big suggestion that staff would like to make is including statewide approach to tenant protections to address this current confusion, lack of consistency between jurisdictions, and so that the City of Redmond would lobby for tenant protections as a statewide level at the next session. So in conclusion, I would like to thank all the landlords, tenants, and stakeholders that I spoke with. This is a really challenging topic, and includes people's, you know, place of living, and so I just want to say thank you and their livelihood.
Thank you so much. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much, Deputy Director Allen, for the memo and the great walk-through tonight. And something that occurred to me in your presentation is, yes, this is a year old. Obviously, there was a learning process at the beginning, so like full implementation, we're six, eight months in, in some regards, and so this is something we're going to continue to learn and live with. So I just wanted to address kind of the we're in progress of it all. One of the concerns that was brought up by a member of the audience tonight was the idea that a landlord might be permitted to demand a renter decide on a renewal at the point they're notified of their rent going up. Is that actually permitted?
So you can, I mean, they can make that request. The question I have asked, often asked back was, were they being asked to sign their lease, or were they just being asked to indicate whether they would be interested in staying? And for one person I talked to, it was to sign a lease, and for another person I talked to, it was just to indicate. And so that gets into the legal matter between them. We don't currently have any regulation that says how early you can request that they re-sign on to the lease, which was the suggestion to potentially change that. I will say, I wasn't hearing a lot of that from a lot of people, but it was a few cases.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fields.
Thank you, mayor. I recall last year when we were talking about this and talking with people in the community, there was a concern about the so-called mom-and-pop renter, or landlords, and that they would basically take their properties off the rental market, sell it, move on. Do you have any information or any data on those types of properties and landlords?
We unfortunately do not have any data because we don't require rentals to be registered with the city, and so there's not a concrete way. I can say with some of the small landlords that I talked to that they expressed frustration with the changes, particularly the one that I talked about earlier, who didn't know about the change, and then the tenant informed him, but they had already moved out, and then it was this back and forth between them, which was unfortunate. But it is something I continue to hear, but I don't have any data to back that up.
Which sort of leads me to a follow-on question, and I think you've already answered it, but in a lot of your discussion, there's a lot of anecdotal conversations, and that's great. I mean, that is information. Are we looking at ways to measure compared to other jurisdictions that don't have tenant protections? Did our rents go up greater than some of those other communities? Are they, are the other economic pressures equal? I mean, trying to isolate a single ordinance is probably a real waste of time, but it would be interesting to know how we compare to other cities.
Yeah, I did not look at that because of so many of the various, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying that I think our rents went up X amount compared to Bellevue because they didn't adopt tenant protections and we did, kind of correlation, but I think it could be something we could look into.
Great. Thank you.
Council President.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions, so I've drafted an email with everything in it, so you don't have to write everything down now.
Great.
But I'm definitely in favor of us studying adding the ability to break the lease early if a rental amount is above a certain amount, supportive of us looking into legal assistance and ombuds, making sure that those guidelines about renter protections is in our lease packets that go out. I know there's some city information that landlords have. I also want to address the issue of, I had heard a few instances of landlords using the default month-to-month that are written into their contracts as a way to get around missing out on rent increases, so delaying telling folks that they had a rent increase and then forcing them into a month-to-month situation, which also forced them into a higher, slightly higher monthly rent. So looking into adding that protection, and then also getting some clarifying language about when a renter is required to sign the lease, but similar, so I've got all that in the email. So I'm definitely interested in us updating our renter protections with inclusive of those things. But I'm, just like Mr. Fields had brought up, I'm interested in knowing, did this actually have an intended consequence that we wanted, which was to be able to keep people housed in our community? And I'm not sure we have enough data to know that yet, but if there's anything that we can, like, gleam from this ordinance, I would love to hear that, as well as studying the regional price-fixing tools that are used and what we can do around that issue as well. So I will send all of that in an email so that you can address it later. I appreciate it.
I'll make one comment, which is just, I want to be clear that I don't think the council passed the ordinance with the idea that it would help to keep rents lower or to help people stay in our community. It was to give people more time so that when that happens. And so I think that has been effective, but you're also hearing there's some side effects that it's causing elsewhere, like, so people are getting more time, but then it's, you know, people are not able to maybe react as quickly as they'd like, or, you know, the rent is still going up by a lot.
Right. And I just, I want to know if that was an unintended consequence of this.
Which is the unintended consequence, sorry?
If landlords raise their rents, knowing that they had this bigger timeline, because that's what we heard from a lot of folks, was that a lot of landlords, that they would have to raise it due to unforeseen, not knowing what the six-month landscape looked like, and somehow extrapolating out if that did cause people to actually have to leave our community.
I see what you're saying. To validate what I did hear from landlords is that they did raise it the highest, more, as high possible as they thought. Again, we don't have data or track that kind of data. It's dependent on what they're telling us in terms of this anecdotal. So they'd say yes. At the same time, if we hadn't have passed it, would they have raised it 25%? I can't say.
We don't know.
Maybe yes for one property, no for another.
It'll be interesting to continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. This is actually a bounce off of Ms. Forsyth's question, and I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss this. Is there, what I heard was there's not a specific way to get information about what the marginal cost increase might have been by implementing this regulation. We don't have that. Have we tried to ask?
I have asked for... I have asked for, I mean, again, it's anecdotal. So, a couple of these were anecdotal, right? It was a similar thing with the late fees. I was like, can you share with me the data of how many people you had from, you know, prior to the ordinance being impacted? But that's one property compared to the, like, all of the, like, polling all the properties. The other thing I'd say that Director Helen just mentioned too, is that we're also seeing still a rightsizing of the market after the pandemic and some of the moratorium on rent increases. And so, we're just in such, we are in such a variable time, it would be really difficult to make that determination.
So, I heard no, which is a fine answer. But my question was, is there a way to get feedback now if we did a retroactive to ask? For example, if I'm a landlord and I was planning on a 10% increase, and because of this 3091 regulation was implemented, I now needed to increase to 15%. Do we understand what the impact to the market locally has been because of this regulation? What I heard was no.
I don't think so.
Okay.
And I would say that I did not get that specificity from, from landlords, like 10 to 15%.
Right.
They just said what they thought it might be, and I think that would be different for every person.
I would agree with that logic for sure. I'm sure, I'm sure everybody's different. Wonderful. Okay, thank you. That's helpful information.
Any other questions this evening? Great. And if you think of others, please email them off to Ms. Allen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is ombuds report for the month of July. If Councilmember Anderson would like to finish up, and then we'll go to the month of August with Councilperson.
Sure. We had a handful of emails come in after our last business meeting in July, which was the 18th, which were including a comment regarding police public records requests taking a long time, when our streetery's permission would be changed to allow for more parking downtown, some issues with properties using a system of software that appeared to be in violation of antitrust law, some concerned citizens. Somebody wrote in about rock packages that are thrown in driveways as being a safety hazard for folks. We had a comment regarding talk time and discussing legal matters as part of our talk time, our study session last week. A thank you for Community Gardens and implementing that work. Follow-up from a service ticket from a resident from, that was handled by the Public Works Department, but apparently had gotten stuck in the system for a little bit over a year. And then several comments regarding wheelchair safety, including summer events, a Lime Bike blocking the right-of-way, diversity inclusion, especially for people with disabilities, and handicap access at Anderson Park. Additionally, we had support for opening the gate at 176th Avenue and support for keeping the gate at 160, 172nd Avenue. Additional support for renters and tenant protections and questions or information given to us regarding school board salaries. And that's the rest of July.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson?
Thank you. So, there have been a few messages I haven't actually responded to yet. We did have, let's see, let's see, the, we have one regarding tenant, tenant garbage situation, which I'm, I'm kind of trying to get my, wrap my head around. A few on National Night Out, which was last night, and a couple of messages regarding Redmond 2050, and I will thank them for their feedback. And that is it to this point.
Great. Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. I've had some conversations with folks around misinformation around council benefits, around implementing a potential stipend for commissioners for childcare, gas-powered leaf blower bans, or gas, yes, gas-powered leaf blower bans, climate change concerns, trail connections and missing connections and closed trails, and housing affordability.
Thank you so much. Any other items from ombuds? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I'm wrapping up a couple from Derby Days still. A couple very specific code questions about, that folks had for their neighborhoods that Jason Brown is helping me with. Also, there is a CERT class scheduled for the fall, so anyone who is interested in the community emergency response training can contact Albi. Her contact information is on the website. I wanted to let everyone know that the Turing Street crosswalks have been installed, and this is really great because this is an example of Team Redmond taking in community feedback from this podium right here, going out and absolutely agreeing with the assessment of the resident and acting pretty quickly to, to make some greater safety possible for the neighbors. So, thank you so much to the Public Works team. I think Deputy Director Steger is still over here, so thank you so much to your team. And although council will not have business meetings for the rest of the month, I will continue to hold my drop-in office hours at the Redmond Library, so feel free to come and chat anytime on the second and fourth Thursday of the month from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I got a call on a drainage, water drainage issue on some property. I suggested they use the Q Alert system. They did. They got a quick response. They're ecstatic about that system, so I just wanted to give a plug for the city and the Q Alert process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items? I don't see any. I just want to say a big thank you to our community for holding National Night Out last night. We had 41 parties throughout our community, and we had fire, police, our emergency management team went out. It was a wonderful evening, and so just a big, big thank you to everyone for participating, and it's just such a fun night. So, thank you all very much. Our next item of business are committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Council President?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the East Rail RAC committee meeting, and it was held at the Sound Transit Hub here on the east side in Bellevue, and so it was really cool to get to see that space. And the most exciting thing that I got excited about was seeing where the trains will sleep at night when the light, light rail is open, and the train wash that is part of that facility, which is all used rainwater for the train washing system, so very green-built facility. We also talked about scooter share program and micro-mobility and how folks from, say, Woodinville will get to the light rail and using, using East Rail once that is, once that is up and running. We had a discussion about welcoming week, which is September 8th through 17th, and events that'll be happening along the East Trail, so look out for those in the coming weeks. There is a call for artists for art throughout the East Trail, so that will be posted sometime in September, so I'll be sharing that out on social media. And there will also be a ribbon cutting on September 7th from 4:00 to 6:00 on the North Rep section of the East Trail. If folks want to keep an eye on their inbox for that official invite, I will pass it along.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart, did you have a committee report?
Thank you. Earlier tonight, we had a committee of the whole for planning and public works. Three items are scheduled to go to our consent agenda on, excuse me, September 5th. That includes the annexation notice of intent for an area of Rose Hill on northeast 97th Street. We set forward the acceptance of a grant from Ecology to continue our pollution prevention work, particularly the work that Tally does with local businesses, and the consultant agreement for the Avondale Road preservation project. So, some improvements to Avondale coming, and I know folks will be excited about that. We also had a really great discussion and report from our colleagues, Councilmember Fields and Councilmember Khan, who attended with Deputy Director Allen and Vanjie Garcia the National Association of Transportation, of city transportation officials. I couldn't remember the C. Thank you. So, that was a great conversation. We also had a follow-up with Jan Harrison on the DEI efforts here in the city, both externally and internally, and some of the work that, that's being developed. We had an update from Chief Shepherd about the Fire District 45 conversations, and then a heads up on our property insurance with Travelers from newly-installed Director Kelly Cochran. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Councilmember Fields?
Last week was the monthly meeting with one Redmond Government Affairs staff, city staff presented topics on 2050, impact fees, and also tenant, the impact of the ordinance on tenant protections. In general, it was a pretty straightforward meeting. Staff did a great job, as they always do, and there was some feedback from committee members about the costs, you know, building in Redmond. So, I took the opportunity to add to that fear, saying that we need to make sure that our impact fees that we're going to look at in September actually reflect and align with some of our policies around environmental sustainability, climate change, and equity. And I've got a commitment from the planning staff that they would look at that, and that I look forward to that discussion when it comes up in September. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? I have one to share. I sit on the King County Regional Homelessness Authority Governing Committee, and it's been in the news a bit, so I thought I'd share a little bit about what's going on. Our original, the first CEO, Mark Dones resigned, and we have an interim right now, and so we're taking this moment as governing committee to do two things. One is to take a look at how the organization is run and make sure we're streamlining any processes and looking at the governance. So, I and Councilmember Ed Prince from Renton will be representing Sound Cities Association on that group. And then another group is being organized in order to do a new CEO search for the organization. So, Mayor Nancy Backus of Auburn, who also represents SCA, will be sitting on that, as well as some other individuals. So, that's up and coming. I'm sure it'll be in the news a bit, but we're looking forward to making sure that we're supporting that organization as best as possible, since we all know homelessness is a regional issue, and we want to make sure that we're taking a regional approach to it to find the best solutions to house people. So, that is what's going on with the Regional Homelessness Authority. With that, I see no other committee reports. We do have an item of new business, and we do not have any unfinished business. Our new business is AM number 23-117, Approval of an Amendment to Interlocal Agreements Governing Home Investment Partnership and Community Development Block Grants, or CDBG funding. Alaric Bien, Senior Human Services Planner, will introduce this item, along with, I think, Director Carol Helen will start us off. And I just want to say thank you to the council for moving this into new business, as we were alerted to this not long ago, and are glad that we could get this approved, or hopefully approved, prior to a deadline.
Thank you, Mayor. That was all I was going to explain, is that we apologize for this not going through the typical three-touch process. We got late word from the county that they needed signatures on an MOU change that had no substantive impacts. They made some assumptions about procurement rules being similar in the county and in cities, which they are not necessarily. And our procurement rules require amendments to our MOUs with other government agencies to go through the city council, regardless of whether there is a cost associated with those MOUs. So, Alaric Bien is here to just walk you through what the changes are that are being requested and why it's important for us to pass this, and we needed to rush this to you because the county is required to respond to HUD by August 11th.
Great. Thank you. So, on July 13th, the Department of Housing and Urban Development notified King County that the interlocal cooperation agreements for the Home Investment Partnership Program and the Community Development Block Grant Program were missing some required language around fair housing and civil rights obligations. These two agreements were due to be automatically renewed for 2024 through 2027 soon, but they need to be updated with this language that reflects what we've already been, we've been doing up until now anyway, so that we can be in compliance with HUD. There's, as Director Helen said, no substantive changes to the interlocal agreements. It's just that one section saying that we are meeting the requirements around fair housing and civil rights, and so we're asking for your approval tonight to accept the amendments to these two interlocal agreements.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions this evening? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve AM number 23-117?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. It sounds like you had a bit of gymnastics to do yourself on this, and I'm sure you had other things going on this week, so thank you all so much for your work on this.
Council, or Council President, would you like to say something?
Yes, just reading it seemed pretty straightforward, and thank you for the description of what actually changed. In, in my preparation for tonight, I just wasn't sure, so I had written down red-line version. So, I think that might be helpful, even if it's just in the memo, to like, call out this is the section that's changed, so that we just, you know, you don't have to explain so much.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a roll-call vote, starting with Council President Forsyth.
Aye.
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 Aye. And that passes 6 to 0. Thank you very much. Thank you again for getting the quick turnaround on this. Thank you, council. There is no executive session tonight, and that concludes our business items for this meeting. If there is no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.